Okay. April 29th work session. City of Gerhard, city council, it's called the order. Chad, I don't have an agenda in front of me, so I'm.
It's on the back of the.
Oh. Thank you. I don't bother turning anything off or anything. All right, so online is for anyone who's unable to attend. Okay, the city administrator evaluation document is in your box, pick it up on your way out, please. Need to have it back. Sometime in the second or third week of May. All right, and the mayor's city council meeting convene time proposal, I want to start at six o'clock. Okay, not in June, because we got to discuss it and make a motion and everything like that, but. After that, July through, let's say October, let's start at six o'clock and get this. Business taken care of, so I want you to think about it, I want to come with a. Proposal in the June meeting and have a consensus that will start. All right.
Could I just ask one question if we were to have a public hearing? When would we start that, do you think, off the top of your head?
A public hearing for a starting time?
In, in, no, we generally have those before, before the city council meeting at six, would you be thinking of starting it at five? Or five thirty?
I would be starting it at five thirty.
I do want to mention that potentially there are two public hearings that have already been advertised for July.
For July?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for telling me. What are they?
Hold on, let me pull it up.
Yeah, okay, this is just like. Why not?
So, so basically, so basically what you're asking is that. Do we, instead of seven thirty meeting?
Seven o'clock meeting, we start at six. That's what I'm asking. Is just starting an hour earlier. For the city council.
So everybody, so anybody that wants to attend or anything like that, gotta give up their dinner hour. To appease what?
To appease?
Yeah.
I would like to start it a little early, so I can.
And what impact would this have on you, whether you prefer that we started earlier, or do you have?
I have no preference. It is, I believe it is an ordinance, though.
It is in our, um, rules of construction, start at seven, that's why I said just for six months.
Right.
Through the summer into the fall. I mean, of course, if you've got a personal problem about it, then you just need to vote that way, okay?
That's exactly what I plan on doing.
Well, good for you.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's move on. To our lovely tree ordinance. Chad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, I have put a couple of pieces of paper on your desk. Ordinance nine four two is there, in the tree ordinance. Uh, we also have a staff report, but you already probably brought that in there, with the particulars that Angela Neil looked up from the meeting. Minutes, I took some pictures of some trees, uh, that I've measured out just for your reference. And then also, I did a document today, uh, ish, the issues highlighted from ordinance nine four two. About this specific topic, so that's specific to nine four two and some of the things that are at it. Um, tonight's work session is to clarify kind of an important discrepancy in our tree ordinance. Uh, we've discovered, and this is through, you know, being on the ground with this, some ambiguity regarding the protections for heritage trees. Versus all trees greater than fifty-five inches in circumference. The original discussion intended to clear connection between these two categories, but the final ordinance language appears to unintentionally separate them. Potentially creating a regulatory grasp and regulatory confusion. To resolve this, we, uh, we, the staff, just seek some clear direction from the council on whether these categories should be combined into a single protective measure. Or remain distinct with separate definitions going along rights. So that's why we're here. Uh, referring to ordinance nine four two. Particular, and then going off the sheet that I provided you today that says nine four two above. Um, we have definitions. There's a tree being generally defined as any tree over thirty-eight inches in circumference. We have a fifty-five inch tree specifically designed, or excuse me, defined as a tree over fifty-five inches in circumference. And a heritage tree separately defined, requiring official designation by city council. So the issues there are that the ordinance text treats fifty-five inch trees and heritage trees similarly. Implying both categories share the same set of protections. Yet heritage trees have an additional criterion formula designation. The second part of this is the protection requirements, minor permits allow for removal of three trees per year. Explicitly excluding heritage trees and fifty-five inch trees. Which may have been the intention. And then major permits requiring the removal of more than three trees, heritage trees or fifty-five inch trees. And council approved need based on specific criteria, safety, hazard, disease, and solar access. The issue I'm highlighting on that is that heritage trees and fifty-five trees are grouped identically into permitting. Creating a little bit of confusion whether or not these categories truly differ from one, or might be redundant. Then we have a heritage tree designation requires property owners' written sense, detailed scoring system. And heritage trees have a unique designation process involving formal council nomination and public hearing before removal. The issue on that one might be that the fifty-five inch rule alone fully protects trees of significant size. The detailed heritage tree designation process could become unnecessary. Potentially, if trees are fifty-five inches or over, they are protected. Exceptions and immediate removals allows immediate removal without permit for hazardous, dangerous conditions of civic emergencies, including heritage trees and fifty-five inch trees. But the practical allowance for emergencies is clear, but again, treating both categories identically questions the distinct necessity of the heritage tree category. So what we're recommending for council clarification tonight. Is to decide between these two options, or any other option to come up with, of course, option A consolidate the fifty-five inch rule on heritage tree categories. For simplified universal protection. Or option B is maintain clearly distinguished separate categories fifty-five inch versus heritage trees. Potentially, we could preserve, you know, some special homeowner's rights and responsibilities associated specifically with heritage trees. And to further clarify, just working. On the ground with folks. And measuring their trees, I think I've done about twelve different permits now. Denied a few, we approved. Most of them because they were under fifty-five inches. Is the homeowner asked me what the difference was between a fifty-five inch tree and a heritage tree? And I said, in fact, there is no difference. That once a tree is fifty-five inches, it is under the protection of the city, now it can't be taken down as a, uh, major permit. And we do have one of those coming to our planning commission, we have somebody who is appealing my decision. And so our next planning commission meeting, we've been working on a staff report to present that to the planning commission. The other way to look at this is potentially, you know, that a heritage tree. Well, actually, that's. Just sort of confused the situation. So that, that's kind of where we're at with the issue, and I just wanted some clarification, it's working. The tree ordinance is, is doing, I think, what some intended, in that the larger trees in town cannot be got up. Uh, but it's just a little bit of confusion, and if I do end up at the, uh, planning commission, which I'm scheduled to do that next month, or. Uh, in a potential court, you know, for a fine that I levy for a tree that's in there, the judge will also kind of bring up this. Uh, issue and want further clarification from me. So for that, I would like a little bit of clarification from you and what the intentions were. Changes to the ordinance to further clarify. So that's, that's the issue, and that's kind of where I'm sitting with this.
Okay, do you have? Where B definition? On this, uh, handout from you?
From ordinance nine four two?
Yeah. Where B, B is not in this, right, or is it? In their definitions, so it is different than what this. Red highlighted area is.
Okay, I'm looking at the red highlighted area.
Right, okay, it's the first paragraph. Under B in red. Okay. It says, "A tree estimated to be older than fifty years, a tree with historical unique aesthetic, or a tree in a prominent location." That isn't on the ordinance, right? So it's. It's like, um, a mute point, because I don't see it in here.
No, it's on there.
Where?
At the end.
Did I not turn the right page?
I was changing. Can I point out that I'm looking online in the signed document from the mayor, and it differs from the document that you just gave us all?
It's what, it's different?
Can we get a sign, um, I'm looking at the signed document, that's got, there's your signature. And it is not, I've already noticed a discrepancy between it and the document that you just gave us, for example, the document that you just gave us says that. Planning on, or that the city council has to decide on removing more and, uh, large trees, and that is a planning commission decision, so. Um, why don't I email?
Okay, well, if we're gonna, there's also under D on page two, item four. Replacement trees are three inch in diameter at four and a half feet above ground, and it's actually.
This is the old one that you copied for the, so probably got the wrong one, so let me, um, I'm gonna email his page to you, Chad. And have you print it off works most likely.
Well, it also is. I mean, three inches of tree is gonna be huge. And we made it around, but I.
It's coming to you, doesn't have a title on it, it should run.
A shoe, yeah, see what I did there, we, I went, I issued. Five, it's the name of the exact same.
You should have gotten one email from me that has out of deck house. No, um, no subject on it.
I would like to know how much time our city administrator is putting in. For this tree fiasco.
Um, I have not ones, I don't have a total, uh, report with that yet, but, and I'll have it for the next city council meeting. Uh, initially, it was quite a bit, um, I think that each tree permit probably took, uh, at least about an hour and a half to. Two, sometimes three hours, depending on how many times I had to make contact with people, go out, measure the trees and that sort of thing. Over the last two weeks, though, I really haven't received maybe but one tree permit. And, uh, I've just got another one that's coming in, and they're getting a little bit easier. Uh, to do, but it's still, it's still a time crunch for sure. Um. I'm assuming with all those permits, at least. Eight to potential ten hours total. Is what that's taking. And we have a planning commission meeting coming up, Garrett spent some time putting together that. Uh. That report, and then, uh, staff would be there to make a presentation as well, so that'll take another couple of hours, uh, a little bit, yeah, ten to. Fourteen is meant to be like that, I'll handle that here.
And your time could be better spent someplace else?
Uh. Hard to say, my time is spent where the council allocates it. And here we are.
Chad had to respond to complaints of people getting the chainsaws out and cutting trees.
They required it.
So now there's just a permit process in place.
Okay. Well, once we get that printed, maybe we should just go ahead and, uh, go down the list and ask people what their, uh. Their thoughts are, if it's a fifty-five inch trees are always protected. Or the other question, heritage trees are a distinct category with protection separate. Because. That would take half the argument away. About going back and forth.
Can I ask why the sitkas spruces aren't detailed out under the heritage trees? They, to me, the sitkas are like the. The heritage of Gerhard trees, but. I think that's just me.
I don't remember.
Would they be considered rapid growing, moderate?
It's dependent, all I have is the heritage tree back. Okay, so this much or?
Hey, if someone's a faster reader than I am, would you tell me where it says about the tree replacement?
Uh, on, the bottom of page two, top of page three. And mostly on top of page three, under section five A.
Thank you very much.
We, are we in this, are we in the original?
The one that's signed, yeah, the one that is.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you for finding that out for me. All right, so Chad's got a couple of things here, trees greater than fifty-five inches. Are always protected, removing the need for separate heritage, heritage tree designation. Or heritage trees are distinct category with protection separate from the general fifty-five inch rule. Providing homeowner's specific rights. Preston, what was your interpretation when we made this ordinance?
I voted against it.
You voted against it, so you don't believe any protection is necessary?
I think that, okay, I've got a note here of myself, homeowner should always be protected against oppressive city rules.
Okay.
Okay, that's my, that's my stance.
Okay, thank you. All right, Paulina, what was your take on what we meant when we passed this ordinance?
Well, um, what I wrote down is heritage tree is a matter of civic or homeowner's pride. In Gerhard's respect for old and historic trees. Um. I think I just thought it was more of a. Designation that I could apply for and get, like. If I had an old house and I wanted to be on a historic register. Something more like that.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm saying, should it be a voluntary thing, or it should be something that, a rule that we impose on others?
Uh, I, I thought it was a voluntary.
Okay.
Wait, you thought, what was voluntary?
A heritage. Let's say, because now, probably there are a few trees that are protected anyway, but maybe not, maybe they're right outside. They are big trees. I love them. I might go ahead and get those heritage designated, because I love them so much. But. I don't necessarily think that. You know, certainly if it becomes a danger, it's dead, it should probably come down. But I also don't think we should be cutting down our sitka spruces willy nilly. Me.
None of nature's going to take that, take care of that.
As she did, as she did this winter.
All right, thank you. Dana, what was your idea when we did this, you voted?
Well, I, yeah, I voted against this because I believe in owner's property rights, I. Like trees as much as the next person, and I also chose to move to Gerhard because Gerhard looks like Gerhard. And, um, I understand what folks are trying to do in trying to. Save our way of life, but I think that you're going down a very tricky, tricky path here.
Okay.
When I'm not finished, you're not gonna come on. So we have an entire council here that can make. Any rule that comes in and makes it worth less valuable, because three of us vote for it, it's a rule. And it goes forward, either property is worth less value, I have a real problem with that. When we were talking about the heritage tree versus the fifty-five inch tree, as I recall, and Cat Roberts might correct me on this, she was actually the one that suggested. That we go with what Pauline was talking about, which was a voluntary program where those people in the community. That wanted to participate could sign up and participate, however, there are some people on this council that feel very, very, very. Unstrongly that they need to tell other people what trees they can cut down on their property, and I understand that, and that's why I voted against it.
Okay, thank you. All right. Sharon.
Um, I'm a little confused. Is, uh. I were arguing the merits of the ordinance when we've already voted on it and passed it, so. I'm a little confused about why people are talking about the merits of it, and why we're even having that discussion, I think the discussion. Simply needs to be to clarify for Chad the difference between heritage and fifty-five inch trees, heritage trees. Don't have to be fifty-five inches. Okay, you look at the criteria and the scoring system, it could be fifty inches, and if it met a lot of the other. Uh, contingencies or. Uh, arteria, it could still be a heritage tree, so they're not the same thing. They're completely separate categories, so again, I'm confused about why there's confusion.
Right, okay.
One more thing.
Okay.
I do just wanna say, in answer to what Dana's talking about, property values are five to ten percent higher with mature foliage.
That is so untrue, there is no place on, when somebody comes up and creates your home, there's no.
Okay.
Because you've said that over and over and over again, go ahead, finish, finish up, not say something again, thank you. Oh, Sharon, please.
Really, ladies?
Yes, stop.
Okay, it's.
I apologize, continue.
Uh, I didn't make that up. Um, I looked that up online, and people. Everybody's, uh, more than welcome to look down a phone line and see what they come across. And correct me if I'm wrong, if you find that I'm wrong.
Okay. Thank you. Now, when I voted on this ordinance, I thought we had two distinct. Groups, one is a fifty-five inch tree, and that was protected. In and of itself and could be considered a heritage tree, a heritage tree is what a. Property owner or a citizen comes to the council. With permission from the property owner and it's designated a heritage tree. Now, maybe I'm in my own world and I didn't get. Everything that was going on around me, but that's what I had in mind, was two distinct. Groupings and not one grouping. So that's the way I thought it was going to be interpreted. And that's what this work session is, it's just clarification of interpretation.
So can I just, I'm gonna ask a dumb question.
No question is.
If I. If a sprayer. For a major tree removal permit, is that correct?
Yes.
And it almost essentially prevents you from removing a tree that is fifty-five inch. And you drive around this town, there are a lot of fifty-five inch trees, and it's gonna affect our buildable property lot numbers.
No.
Well, why, why is that, why does it not?
Because it's an exclusion on here, you made sure it was an exclusion on here.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, you can, you can do your footprint, you know.
There's a major tree removal permit criteria, so let's say this person has three trees, and it's your example of that. An actual permit that is a little hard to read. Which is page. The last one? No, I don't remember what it is, three, no, page three. We pulled it sideways, so it's like page N. So. One of the conversations that we had was that, of course, we wanted to do a permitting process so we knew what trees were coming down. Uh, in the neighborhood, and then we also wanted to protect the fifty-five inch trees, uh, that were heritage. I, one of the misconceptions, and it depends on what staff member you asked that was also present in the meetings, is that. Uh, given the thought process wasn't removed. People able to cut down five trees down to three. And. I assumed as well that that meant they could cut down three trees. No matter what size they were. A hundred inches in circumference, down to two inches in circumference. Or thirty, uh, three, thirty-six inches, wherever the definition is, that those trees all could have come down. The practical, uh, and then, if this person decided that they wanted to take the sixty-six and the seventy-four. Inch tree, turn them into heritage tree, that that would give them a certain amount of additional protections that they weren't available on the minor permit. Um, that was kind of the direction I thought they were heading, that's not the way it works on, on the ground, on the ground, as we look on page three. Those three trees that are there, the forty-two inch can be cut down, the seventy-four and the sixty-six cannot, regardless. Or regardless of whether or not it's a heritage tree. Uh, and so.
That's without a permit?
With, yeah, with a permit, without a major tree permit.
Right, okay, they can be cut, they just have to go through the process.
Correct, now the process is, let's say that in this case, which, uh, I'm holding to the fifty-five inch. Uh, I told this homeowner that the seventy-four and the sixty-six cannot be cut down. Says, well, what are my options, I says, uh, you don't have any options at this point, unless. Under a major tree removal permit, there's criteria. And so they have to meet this criteria, so the criteria is necessary to remove trees with potential safety hazard. Which is actually true for any tree in Gerhard. The necessity to remove the trees which are diseased, evidence must be provided by a qualified specialist. That is also true. In, uh, other permits as well. And solar access, uh, if, if the trees deposit, uh, deposit needles, so in this case, if this person, and he's not the case. If this person wanted to come to the, uh, planning commission and ask about sixty-six and seventy-four, it would be denied. Pretty well, unless it was diseased, dead, or dangerous.
Okay.
No, that's not what it says, that's not the way I read it, so if you look at page two on the ordinance.
Yeah.
Number four. Um, it says may be permitted as a major tree. A removal permit, planning commission may grant or deny requests for a major tree removal permit.
And then go to page three.
Right. And, what's, what you just read is?
Three.
Three, okay.
Page three.
Yeah.
That's what they have to find, which is one of the following criteria is met, no criteria, fact of
So in the case where I do have three trees that are all over 55, they're pretty close to 55, one 65 and all that, there's no way for the planning commission to allow that. Unless it's diseased, dead, or by.
Let me, let me use an example. Those trees that I went with to measure over on Cottage. So if you stand way back and look at those trees, which we did after we got finished, I was like, oh, they just, they've been butchered by the power company. So they're very irregular growth, and, I mean, I don't see just thinking about it. I'm not saying that planning commission should do this, but I don't see why the planning commission couldn't say, no, those trees are not really healthy trees. If you looked at the way they've been cut, those are not healthy trees. Would never say they were. So they, if they said, if they looked at them and said that, they could give permission for those to be removed if they thought along those lines. That's what I'm saying, but that's just one example. I mean, if you look at these trees, you know, the bigger trees of these three trees that you're talking about, they look pretty good, but I haven't seen, I haven't looked at them in person. So that's the whole point of the ordinance. If you read the purpose of the ordinance, the purpose of the section is to recognize that trees are significant aesthetic and environmental resource. It's in our comp plan. Um, and that's why we tried to do this.
Yeah, and I'm not, and I'm not speaking to that, you know, again, council tells me what to do, and I do it. Uh, so what I, I, I don't see that there's a process for the planning, let's say a tree specialist looked at those trees that have been kind of butchered by the power company over the years, and they look at it, and yeah, they're uneven, but they're, they're actually three pretty healthy trees. They're quite green, they've got a lot of greenery on them on the side away from there. I'm not sure, I, I could probably get a tree specialist to look at it and maybe say it's dangerous, and maybe it's not. Um, I don't know that that's under the planning commission's purpose to be able to do that. It'd have to be a specialist. And some of the specialists I talked to, and I didn't talk to them about this, not yet anyway, um, they look at that and go, oh, no, it's a viable tree, it's living. It's not about to fall over, it's assuming. Um, and so that's where we're in the situation to where I'm bringing a major tree permit, but I don't see a way for the planning commission to make any designation, unless it's considered dangerous.
Can I say something? I don't think any tree should be placed and planted over, over our water lines. I think all those should be removed. Okay, for the sake of the city. I, I don't think any tree should be planted to where their, their, their growth is going to infringe upon the power lines. I think those should be removed.
That would be a lot of trees in Gierhart.
Damn right it would be a lot of trees, okay, but the problem is, right? I live down on the east side of the tracks, and every single time that the wind blows, the trees on the south side of Pacific Way blow over the power lines. Right? Columbus State, I mean, the, the, the 07 storm. We were without power for over a week. Because everything from Scarborough's property, all those big spruce trees on Scarborough's property blew, blew over the power lines. I mean, to tell you, it, it was a, it was a mess, right? This ordinance doesn't say anything about, about clearing out the, the problem trees that are gonna, that are gonna create, you know, discomfort for the citizens of Gierhart.
Doesn't speak to the residency of our water.
And I don't care what the planning commission says, or what the city council says, it's logic. That's what we seem to have a lack of.
Chad, can I ask you, in that example you were talking about, um, in front of the Red House on Cottage, is it, what, why does he want those trees removed?
He was gonna plant new trees, instead of, you know, dropping some limbs, they're not as pretty as he would like, and wanted to plant some new things that were out there as well. That is on his property.
So he doesn't like the aesthetics?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, and I think there are trees that are, they've been cut by the power company as well. Um, but I don't think any of them are dangerous. I don't think any of them are dead or dying.
I mean, do they need pruning? Would he like them better if they were pruned?
All I know is that they wanted to remove them, and then I denied the permit except for the one tree.
Okay. Like Dana, you don't I wouldn't like your opinion. Do you think we have two issues here on this ordinance with the 55 inch and the heritage trees are one issue?
Well, I, I do see what he's saying. It's, it's almost like a, um, it's like a trick question. You can file for a permit, but you're only going to get permission to cut down that tree under these circumstances, so you're going to waste your time going to the planning commission. The planning commission, based on these rules, is going to say no unless it meets very strict criteria that a lot of trees are not going to meet, and, um, I do agree with Paulina and Pat Roberts that this should be more of a voluntary thing. That is my issue. I know it was said that some, some people believe that trees add to property values. I have bought a number of homes, and I have them all appraised, and I've never seen a check the box on any appraisal for a tree that adds value to your home. Now, I have been called out on property inspections for trees that were in bad locations, and I have had banks tell me that they wouldn't take a loan, give me a loan unless a tree was removed. But I've already told you my opinion. It doesn't, it doesn't, I do see a problem here. You've, you did what you wanted to do, or what some people wanted to do, which is you created two bites of the apple to prevent people from planting trees. The 55 inch tree, which they cannot cut, and then there's the heritage tree if they want to volunteer. So if they want to voluntarily protect the tree, so much property, and, and possibly devalue their property, they can do that on their own. But if they have a 55 inch tree, this council has imposed its will and said you can't cut it.
Okay, thank you. Preston, what's your opinion? Do we have two issues or one issue?
I think we've got two issues. I think that, I, I'm with Paulina, and, you know, and if somebody has a tree on their property that they want to have a heritage tree, it should be their, it should be their decision. It shouldn't be this council.
Well, the only time the council's involved with the heritage tree according to this ordinance is if a citizen would like a tree designated a heritage tree, and they get permission from the property owner, and they come to the council.
I think the property owner should be the one to designate that.
Well, they give permission to have a Okay, that's fine.
The property owner needs to come and say, I want that tree to be.
Okay, but you think there are two issues?
Absolutely.
55 inch and heritage tree.
Well, I agree, and, and it may be, um, and, and I love the trees, I love trees. I wouldn't cut them down willy-nilly, and I've probably got some that are growing too close to my house and set fire hazard, all that. But they're beautiful, I can't cut them down. I've said more criteria for removal on this major tree removal permit criteria.
Right, but do you think there are two issues?
Yeah, there's two.
Okay, thank you. Sharon, two issues?
Yes.
Okay, I believe there's two issues. We've got three people that are saying two issues, and we've got two people, four people that are saying two issues, and one person disagreeing. We've settled the matter. Okay, is there anything else on our agenda?
Just a minute, just a minute, here you go. Who's the one person that didn't agree that there were two issues?
Dana. She said two. No, I, I understood exactly what you, what you
You understood, but
However, I pointed out that there is still a problem, because you have under due process, you can't just give them a, you know, a willy-nilly, you can go through the motions and apply for a, um, a permit, but we're going to cancel it. That does not follow due process. We're going to have a problem with this, and that's it. You guys are going to do what you're going to want to do.
Okay, so you don't, you want to be counted as a two-issue person or a one-issue person?
It, it doesn't matter. I'm against this whole thing. I don't want to be counted as somebody who says there's any way to make this better.
I still stand with four people say it's a two-issue on the tree ordinance, and one person against it.
No.
Entirely.
I'm, I'm a Dan, I, I'm totally opposed to this whole, this whole tree issue thing.
Okay, then
Going here in Gierhart.
Let's change that again and make it two oppose, and three for the two issue. Alright, do you have any other questions?
So to be, so to be clear, so everybody understands this time when we walk away from it, when you're talking about two issues, you're saying that the people that, that are for it, they're saying, yes, I want there to be a 55 inch restriction, and I want there to be a heritage tree restriction.
That is what I understood we just said, yes. Thank you very much. Alright, now, is there
Paulina did indicate that she wanted more, potentially more.
I think we may have to readdress this.
If we have to readdress it, that's at another time. This is strictly one topic as a work session, is what we noticed of the other. And we cannot deviate into broader discussions about how this is wrong, or this is right, or we need more of this. This is, that's inappropriate. According to state statute, and I, I don't want to get in trouble with the state, because you know, I, I fear them.
So I would potentially suggest that we make a change in the future, although I will continue to apply the ordinance as it was written. But one of the changes that might clarify this is potentially under definitions, I don't know if it's the best place to put it. The definition, page one, 55 inch tree is any tree with a primary trunk greater than 55 inches in circumference is measured at four and a half feet above existing grade. And then adding, uh, I'm on page one of the ordinance for those, would you? Okay, um, ordinance nine before two.
No.
So under 55 inch tree, essentially we're saying is a tree that may not be cut down unless it's diseased, dying, or dangerous.
And it has to go in front of them.
Well, if it's dangerous, we're able to take it down, uh, have it taken down in an emergency situation. And I would have to prove to you that a tree specialist has said that, unless painfully obvious, and it's, and I take some issues, right? You would otherwise agree with me.
So if a homeowner has a 55 inch tree mounted on a water main for their house, and they want to do the right thing, and they know it's going to come down, they want to to take it down to prevent them coming down in a windstorm and disrupting everybody's water supply, they can't do that?
Well, under E, page three, would that be a necessity to remove the tree which poses a safety hazard?
Yeah, because I would interfere with the water flow for a fire, and that is a safety issue.
Well, and it's not on the property owner's property anyway, aren't the water lines on public property? Well, the tree, but this protects the tree root area too, which can spread quite a distance.
And in this case, the city would be the applicant for the permit. And if there was a tree on a water line that right now is not about to fall over, uh, there's nothing really going on, I might be a little hesitant to just go around town and start taking out all the trees that are on water lines, because that's
You go down the ridge path, and you tell me how many trees you're going to be taking down, because it's on
Fifty or sixty percent, yeah. And, and
You, you find out
I don't know that I would want that kind of power. You know, I don't think that that would be a good thing. Um, so I probably wouldn't. Now, if it was a tree, I, we have it so that homeowners can apply to cut down a tree that's being in the right of way, because the city doesn't own any trees, it's not in our home property, such as the village fat and their parks. Uh, we didn't plant the trees that are in the right of ways, we didn't put them there, so a homeowner could apply, and let's say they have a 35 inch tree or a 40 inch tree, uh, I could write them a permit if they wanted to take that down. And that's the way I would treat that. But I'm not comfortable with going around determining whatsoever, uh, a uh, water line or into the power lines, which we had all of that pretty well fixed around town over the last couple of weeks, uh, or visiting power has in there. So I, I wouldn't feel comfortable with that. So if we came to you, we would probably do this through a major tree permit, and I would say this 55 inch tree is over a water line, we have some future work that we have to do here, it has to be removed. Then I can see that that would be posing a safety hazard, and then the planning commission would likely give me permission to do so, which is appealable to this council down the road.
Right, I mean, if someone appealed it, but with your statement, you can't just say future work, because throughout Gierhart, we need to replace all our water lines and upgrade.
Yeah.
So future work could be, what? Twenty years down the line, all these trees have to go now?
I think I would come to the planning commission without a job that was immediate. That's a good point. So it would be an immediate job that had to happen. And if it was an emergency, we would take down the tree, and then I would put the permit together, and uh, it would be potentially debated afterwards.
Yeah, let's put the tree back.
Yeah. Whether or not we're doing things correctly, but yeah.
Yeah, okay. Alright, so you've got your direction.
So I'm going to continue with the ordinance as it is, and 55 inch trees cannot be taken down unless they're diseased, dead, dangerous, sore. Uh, and then we will go from there, and then over time, we'll see how this shakes out, and if there's any other issues, I'll bring it to you. That this clarification is helpful.
Okay. And if any counselor has issue with this ordinance, write something up and come to the council, and we'll talk about it at a work session and go from there. That's the way it's supposed to be. Is there anything else you need to discuss? Because I don't have anything else on my agenda.
No, I don't, but we do have Peter and Garrett on. Did I cover everything that we were asking questions about, gentlemen?
Yeah, I mean, there's still, this all started because Garrett and I interpreted the code in the exact opposite direction. So we are to blame. Um, but I, I think we have some feedback for the planning commission on next Thursday, and then they'll just have to, uh, process it, uh, based on their understanding.
Garrett, you have anything?
No, thanks for your discussion. I think it did, it will have helped the planning commission move forward with a reasonable decision.
Gentlemen, or everyone who's on, thanks a lot. I'll have a motion that, well, do we need a motion? Okay, that's it. We're done.
Hey, thank you very much, Paulson.
Thank you.